I'd like to call this meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order on Monday, February 26, 7:00 PM. I'd like to record the attendance. All the members are here except for two, which are excused, and that's Member Ryan Bruno and Member Alan Rowland, who are on vacation, as I understand. And hopefully, one or both can join us by Zoom tonight for our meeting and give their two cents, which I would appreciate during the limited discussions by the public. They are not allowed to vote by Zoom, just so everybody understands that, but they can give us their opinions during the open session. So with that, I'd like to now ask for you to stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the interest of the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under my government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support? Member Reese moved. Member Nordike seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, zero. Okay. Is there any conflict of interest?
No.
None noted. Thank you all. I'd like to review and approve the minutes of the February 5 meeting. Any comments?
Member Engel has a comment.
Yes, Member Engel.
I'd just like to make one edit. Article 7, last paragraph. Member Nordhuk made a motion to schedule a public hearing. I supported that and I voted for it, and the current iteration of these show me both voting for it and against it, which is somewhat inaccurate.
Apparently, I didn't vote. Also, I noticed on there.
I would strike my name from the opposed and leave it in the in favor column, please.
Okay. So who was the other one that voted against it?
It may have been me, but I don't know. I'll have to look at the tape.
It must be Reese because her's not in the list.
That's the way it would appear.
It's what it looks like. I believe he did.
Okay.
Okay. Good eye.
So replace Engel and oppose for Reese. Add Engel to.
I'm already there. We're good.
Okay. Any other comments, updates, changes?
Hearing that, I'd make a motion to approve of the changes.
Support? Moved by Member Reese, supported by Member Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, six, zero. Next item. I'd like to acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. Your comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. If you want to get up and give us your opinion on something, please give us your name and your address, and I'm going to ask that it not include anything to do with the public hearing issue we have tonight during this Article 6. Anybody? Anybody on Zoom? Excuse me. Okay. Thanks, Matty.
I think we want to add that this is probably going to be Member Bruno's chance to give us input on these items.
Well, there's a public hearing for Article 7 and 9 on those particular items. So if it's in regard to those items, there'll be opportunity for him to.
I believe he can also speak during Article 11, no?
No, it's, yeah, he will, but we're not handling the bylaws until, he's done a lot of work on the bylaws.
Sure.
So if he, I guess.
That would be a good time.
Yes.
Is Member Bruno on the line, Matty? No. Okay. Thank you.
Well, hopefully, he's out having some fun on his vacation then.
Hopefully. Okay. I'd like to now move on to Article 7, case number 243811. At 1601 Galbraith Avenue Southeast. Madison.
So we have. Good afternoon. Grand Rapids Gymnastics. Yes. And our phone is also Grand Rapids Gymnastics, and Mark Duall is here. Tonight, we are requesting. Of the Walkthrough Office Park, to our venue. So this in Site 7, Building A of this one, was the beauty there outlined, since did not include a daycare, a special office, church, health sports club, security design, and certain others. So we are here tonight to request a requirement to that PUD to actually, more adding daycare center. They, so they're four of them. This would be part of the other facility. So they'll be utilizing this site, and this is. So, Chapter 3 indicates that the type of care requested is considered out of the center under a particular care organization definition in Chapter 3. In addition, there's also right motion by the state. So when we looked into adding this as a permitted use, we wanted to be sure to. So in the first table, you see, we've been given the requirements and how the. So they are leaving a block size requirement, they're not proposing a dormitory facility, they've been around this operation, would be 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I report that. The next requirement would be 100 square feet, 5,000 square. Outdoor. Existing green space. You guys agree?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. So there's the 3D space just west of where they proposed. Their final site plan. But the square feet doesn't meet that requirement, would be approximately 2,645 square feet. Just to take a minute, that microphone. All right, listen to this.
It's kind of like the internet.
There we go. All right. Okay. So moving on from the outdoor play area, they do meet that minimum square footage requirement, and we have indicated in our conditions that they would have to submit a more detailed site plan indicating that. The signs they have also indicated would meet our standards. They haven't proposed any yet. I think they would just need a wall sign, and they have agreed that they would meet the standards required by the township and the PUD. Such facilities must be registered with the township and licensed with the state. The applicant has indicated they will seek the state licensing once they get the go-ahead from the township that they see as an appropriate use. So we will request the proof of registration with the state. And then finally, there's parking requirements set for the property. The applicant has indicated that there'll be about six employees. Therefore, based on the standard, they would be required four parking spaces. If you've looked at the site, there's ample parking, if not more than needed, so we're not concerned about them being able to meet that standard. Obviously, we will require it to be indicated on their final site plan for approval. Moving forward from those childcare center requirements, if the zoning ordinance amendment is recommended for approval tonight, the site will require that that final site plan gets reviewed. We've requested a basic site plan, and the applicant is preparing the appropriate documents. Other items for the applicant to speak to, as mentioned earlier, would be the days of the week for operation and proposed capacity or number of children they believe they will be serving each day. The final standards, we looked into on page four of the staff report. So Section 16 gives general standards for a planned unit development, so we want to include this just to be sure if we're amending the PUD, it's still in line with what a general PUD would require. So considering those standards, we didn't have any major concerns being raised. So if there's any specific parts of that, I can go through that, but I'll leave that standard as is for now. Based on this review that we've done, looking into the district, the proposed use, I am comfortable making the recommendation that you guys recommend this for approval tonight to the Township Board of Trustees. I would recommend the motion be with the following conditions, that all necessary state, county, and local permits and approvals are obtained, that they meet those landscaping and fencing requirements for the proposed outdoor play area, and have that approved by the planning director, that the applicant obtain a signed permit if they seek out any signage for the project, and prior to operation, the applicant must submit a site plan to our department for that final review. That's my summary. So do you guys have any initial questions?
Any questions, Member Reese?
Yep.
Specifically, what was this area previously inside the building?
So this current interior of floor plan. Oh, that's upside down. So Mark Duall, it currently runs as an office.
As office space. Okay. Are the people in that office, well, I can wait till the applicant comes up after you're done, Madison, and I'll ask.
Yeah, Mark can speak to that.
And then I had one other question for you, though, Madison, is the site plan will come back to the planning department? Is, you want it to go to the planning department, or does it come in front of the planning commission?
It would just come to the planning department, pending that they meet those conditions that we set.
So it'd be a staff approval?
Yes, to make sure they're meeting the site plan standards.
All right. And you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Madison? Member Engel?
Just so I'm clear to follow up on Scott, this is not a site plan review by the planning commission tonight. You want our actual recommendation based on what's been presented so far to the township board?
Yes, so it's a preliminary plan because they're not proposing a new development or expansion of the building. It's simply a build-out of the interior with the addition of the green space that is existing as well. We were comfortable with having you approve a preliminary site plan based on them meeting the standards to recommend for approval.
It's essentially just a PUD amendment.
Okay.
For use change.
Yeah, the use would be permitted if it was not a PUD.
The only change to the language of the PUD is under Section 6, which includes Paragraph 7, the child daycare center, right? I didn't see any else.
Prior to it going to the township board, we would have legal counsel review, or we would make sure, but yes, Section 5, permitted uses under Phase 1. Section 6.
Just one more question. Always just one more.
That's okay.
If memory serves, this is the same general parking area where we were waiting on a different change to take place with additional parking that we tentatively approved. It's in the same area? I don't know if it's in the same PUD or not.
I believe it's a separate parcel. Is it the lax expansion you're talking about?
I think so, but it's adjacent. So when you referenced, there's a lot of parking, are you including that when you sort of expansively point to that and say there's plenty of parking?
So we counted sites, parking sites, just here to the south, and then also just to the north of the building. You can see on here a portion of it. So we just considered this lot and this lot.
Okay.
And determined that there was sufficient parking.
There were some parking agreements there to.
Yeah, I just don't know whether those ever got.
Yeah. I could count the spaces. Oh, wait, I can't.
All set. Thank you very much.
Member Nordike?
I want to clarify, too, that that 75 parking spaces that we counted on this was only the southwest side there. So that's not counting anything to the east where the gym is, or anything that the church uses and the office buildings use to the north.
Perfect. Member Nordike?
Yeah, a few questions if I could, Mr. Chair. Do we know how many parking spots that we have?
On the whole site?
Yes.
It was over 200 in what we counted on the parcel, but I don't have the exact number in front of me today.
So, and as I look at your staff report, it says requesting a preliminary plan review, which I think there's confusion on.
Okay.
Is it's just modifying language in a PUD. So what are you asking for?
A PUD amendment that has a preliminary plan included.
Got it. And so.
Just to provide more information as to why the PUD amendment is needed.
And our legal team has not reviewed the proposed language that you're bringing to us to approve tonight?
You're not approving language tonight, so you'd be recommending that the daycare center use be permitted in the PUD.
Got it.
And the township would board would vote to approve the ordinance amendment.
So you're suggesting that we would just approve that that use would be granted, but we wouldn't see the language before it goes in front of the township board? I want to make sure I understand what you're proposing.
Well, the draft hasn't been finalized. The draft is in its first.
I'm just asking what you're asking us to approve and do tonight.
I'm asking for a recommendation for approval of the daycare center, which would require a PUD amendment.
And you do not want that to come back in front of us to review before it goes?
Usually, the draft PUD would come to us later. I think that's what.
That's where I'm going, but perhaps our new community planning and development director has a different way of running things that I'm not aware of.
If you're, this is, I probably would have asked for more information to get this in front of you had I had this in my hands from the start, but I also wanted to be considerate of the fact that they were already in the process. So if the planning commission finds that you don't have enough information, we can table this until, I think, our next meeting, we would be able to notice for. Would we need to know, we have a meeting next week, but we wouldn't.
So is your concern that you would be approving a preliminary site plan that isn't sufficient?
My concern is I don't know what we're approving. Like, you're asking us to look at, and I see my fellow.
Well, you're not approving anything, you're recommending.
There it is. We're not approving anything.
You're recommending for approval.
Yeah, it would be great if we could see it, and so that's my take. I'll let my fellow.
Just to clarify what Mr. Nordike, Member Nordike, you're saying you would prefer that the site plan itself come back here?
I'd like to see the language that's approved by legal.
Okay.
If you're asking us to make a recommendation to change language, I'd like to understand what that language is.
Okay.
And we're meeting in a week, so we're not holding folks up that long to complete that. And I apologize that this level of detail wasn't done. We're switching out staff, and it's not typical that we miss like this.
Member Reese?
I was just going to follow up with that and say that generally, with a PUD amendment, we would make the site, the site plan approval, and then it would go to the next stage, which would be to draft the PUD, and then it would come back, and we generally make the recommendation to the township board for the PUD after we see that language.
Right.
So I mean, generally, it is a two-meeting process.
Yeah.
Here, at this level.
Right.
Member Richardson?
This is not exactly a question about their specific plans, but we've had, over the past year, like, many different things from neighboring properties of this area that have come before us, and I can't remember specifically all the details of all of those requests.
Okay.
But like, how far away from the area that was, like, polluted would this daycare be? Remember, I feel like years ago, there was some sort of water contamination issue, and as far as I know, no one ever came in and cleaned it up, which is sort of.
Yeah, I.
All polluted. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't have knowledge of.
And then do you remember a few months ago, I can't remember also, someone came in and wanted like a smoking deck?
Yes, so that was the adjacent PUD to the south that actually is, their parking lot is on here, so that's for Watermark's Country Club. They were.
Okay, so that's pretty far away from where this daycare will be.
It's across the parking lot, in a separate PUD.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Madison?
May I address the contamination issue? This site is serviced by water and sewer. Now, obviously, they would want to look into that, but if there's water contamination in the groundwater, it's not going to impact children in this area because that site is serviced by water and sewer.
Well, I mean, if the area and the soil was polluted enough to affect the groundwater, then the soil is polluted. I think. I guess it's not a science.
I'd like to hear from the applicant at this time.
I just make one more note that I did find that in 2004, the adjacent building came before planning commission to propose a similar daycare center use, but it was, ended up being withdrawn once it got to township board, but I don't know if any of you were familiar with that previous review, but it was on the same property. I will invite the applicants up to answer questions, and I'll be on the backboard in case you need me.
Please come up and give us your names and your address.
Yeah, I'm Mark Duall. I'm the owner of the property at 1601 Galbraith, Suite 302. That would be the proposed site for the daycare. I'm also a resident of Cascade Township for 30 years. Bought this, I bought this from A.J. Bennett Closet when he condoized the 1601 building. Church wanted to come in, but they wouldn't rent, so they, A.J. sold them the property, and then he came to me and everybody else in the 1601 building and said, if you're interested in buying, you have the opportunity right now. So I did. That was in 2004, I think. So then, and this is Mark.
Yeah, my name is Mark Bowen. I'm the owner of Grand Rapids Gymnastics. I've been the owner of GRG since 2011. I have three daughters, one of which was a gymnast, so that's what drew me into that sport there. So in 2011, we had roughly 200 families and six employees. Today, we are 865 families and 47 employees.
Good for you.
We, one more important number is we have between 200 and 300 families on a waitlist. We have had those numbers ever since the pandemic. And so simply put, Mark and I have become friends over the years as we're neighbors with our businesses, and he had heard that we were bursting at the seams. His current tenant is suffering from the post-pandemic scenario where everybody works from home, so it doesn't make sense, or it seems it doesn't make sense for them to continue with their lease, and so he indicated they were looking to potentially move out in November of this year. So we do have plenty of time. We've delays, no problem with us. We're way ahead of schedule on this. But he had inquired if we would be interested in expanding into his space, and obviously, the answer was immediate, yeah, we'd like to talk about that. So originally, I think the idea was just to take the traditional operational characteristics of what we do over into his space, but given it is office space, it's not clear span up to 25 feet, can't do, you know, flips off bars and whatnot in his space. We have lots of programs at GRG. We have, you know, both boys and girls gymnastics. We have boys and girls ninja. We have team program, recreational program, preschool programs, and we have many programs for what we call the littles as well. In the past, we have been down the road getting certified with the state for daycare, so we're very familiar with that process. We didn't go full or on that because as we got further into that, we discovered we didn't really need it. Most of our classes for the littles are only three hours long, and we're very movement-based. So we've really never pursued the full or certification. Now, with this idea, the thought is to take our littles over into his space and then also open up a full-fledged licensed daycare facility. A lot of that comes from the aspect of there's massive need for daycare in today's world, and we feel like we can, we've always been good neighbors and good stewards of township. Mark is interesting to me as a property owner. He really wants this property to be utilized for something that benefits the township, and then, you know, we think that we can provide that use for the space. Been right next door for a while. It's not like we're coming before you wanting to open up a pizza shop, having never cooked pizza before. You know, we cater to 850 families and their use, and we've been doing that for 15 years now, and we feel like we're doing a pretty good job because we've got a pretty lengthy waitlist.
We just need more space.
We need more space. We need more space.
Plain and simple.
Yeah. I actually work out of that office every day. There's three of us left. Sometimes, there's only one, which is me. And I've had kids running back and forth in front of my door.
Boys that go throughout the hall.
All summer long for the last 16 years. I've been a big supporter of the gymnastics. I was a gymnast growing up, and I, when we were chit-chatting about it earlier, we just thought it was kind of a cool idea, you know, where kids could, and during the winter, you know, everybody has outdoor playgrounds, but they've got a gymnastics gym. You know, I'm like, how cool would that be for, you know, young kids to be able to just go from there, we're talking mind and body, and just shoot out over to the gym, and, you know, with supervision, literally get to run around year-round as opposed to just in summertime in Michigan. So we thought it was just kind of a cool idea and, like I said, a good use. Like I said, I would have to go to my current tenant, which is actually my own company, and basically convince them, well, it's a different group of people, not to renew in November, but I think they would based on my recommendation, so.
Since you're getting lonely in there.
Pardon me? Slowly, yeah. I get to play my own music as loud as I want.
Do any planning commissioners have questions for the applicants?
They answered all of mine right there in their exchange, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do I have to, like, just ask something?
Come on up.
Just for clarification of me, because it's going to come back to me, but my name's Carrie Johnson. I work at, I'm with them. I'm sorry.
She's my senior business operator. She runs.
So you're an applicant?
Yes. So when you ask him to do something, it's probably going to be me that doesn't. So I just want to clarify.
So you're really the first that we should talk.
Yeah.
Your name and address was what?
My what?
Your name and address was what?
Of where I'm with you guys.
No. What is your name?
Carrie Johnson.
And your address?
Where I live, my home. 7195 Dorset Drive.
Okay.
Sorry. Hello, confused. So I am just clarifying, maybe just for you guys as well. I know she stuck this up there, which is the inside of his building right now. There is very, like, we are not really changing anything inside here except for maybe changing some walls to half-walls, and there's only a couple of those. So there's really no change inside the space at this point unless the state comes to us and says something needs to be adjusted, then of course, we're going to address that. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew there was no build-out. There's really no change in the floor plan as far as the walls is where they're at, and as far as the space, you know, the green space. So I was a little concerned, or not concerned, but confused because he keeps saying the plan that you need to have to approve, which, I don't, the site plan. I don't know that there's anything that's, like, I don't know what else I would do.
The renovations are very minor.
Yes, they are very minor inside. Yes, they are very minor inside. And that's another thing that made us very excited about the space because, because of our knowledge from previous licensing um going down the path. We are, are pretty well-versed in that and know that, you know, that space is gonna be given approval pretty quick as far as what our hope is. Um, so I just didn't understand the site plan, like how, you know, what you're, we need to give you because there isn't any change from the outside plan. We're not adding to it. So I'm asking you a question.
Staff will, staff will, um, once this is sorted out, staff will contact you with a specific list of needs.
Okay.
Usually after an approval up here, there'll, there'll be a letter that will be sent to you that would outline exactly what you need.
Okay. And we're not, and as far as Grand Rapids Gymnastics, that's a whole separate, like, that's not even involved in it. It's just.
Any other questions?
No, I have no other questions.
No more, thank you.
No questions here, then I would uh make a recommendation that we move to a public hearing.
Make a motion to move to public hearings?
Support.
I think you made a recommendation though.
Yeah, you're right. I did. I didn't mean to, but I did.
That's worth it.
So Nordike got it. Engel supported it. Now we can.
If Engel supports. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Anybody in the audience or online would like to make a comment? Maddie, nobody?
She nodded no, so here you nod and make a motion to close the public hearing. Support.
Motion by member Reese, supported by member Nordike. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other questions or discussion by board members?
Member Chair or Mr. Chair, I, I would move, or I would suggest that we move to table this so that we can get the details. I, I have a hard time approving something that we don't see the language of, especially since we're meeting in a week.
Yeah.
I, I have concerns I'll talk about at the end of the meeting about detail or the lack of it lately, so. Um, but uh, yeah, does anybody have any concerns with waiting a week? I, I don't think it's, yes.
My, my only concern is that if we wanna have legal review the language that goes into the P U D amendment, can we be able to get them to do that in seven days? That's, that's the only challenge.
I think that's right there. Let's ask her.
Legal is here.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Laura Genovich from Foster Swift. Um, so as I understand it, the um language you're referring to would just be adding that child daycare center language as a permitted use in this P U D and really putting it in ordinance form for your approval and we can very easily do that, certainly within seven days.
I, I think we can probably express to the applicant that I, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but I get the sense that there's favor for this. So this, this is just a technicality. I don't want you to be concerned. Yeah.
Fair statement.
Yeah.
May I make one further clarification? Before you?
Yes.
Um, though, I'd like to point out that our ordinance doesn't give a clear um the items that are required for a P U D amendment. We don't have that language. So we're working on the master plan and there's a lot of things within our ordinance that we wanna clarify. Um, with this type of use, as she stated, I don't think that a stamped sealed site plan by an architect is appropriate for a site that's not designing. I don't wanna put that burden on them to hire all of that. It, it exists. So I just wanna make sure that we're giving you adequate information for your decision next week. I plan on talking to the applicant. We, staff plans on talking to the applicant and just requesting with them, we'll get a site plan drawn that shows circulation, that shows how the children are gonna cross the street, the fence location, the landscaping location, allocated parking spaces, but this is not required by our ordinance. I just wanna make sure that the planning commission is comfortable with that level of detail and other, any other details. It'd be good to have now so that we don't hold them up in the future. Is there?
I, I don't know that the, I, I don't know that the hang-up necessarily is on a detailed site plan as much as that typically at this point, we would be asking staff to move forward with drafting the P U D and then the P, the draft language of the P U D would come in front of us at the next meeting. We generally would approve that language and then send it to the township board for them to review. So I, I mean, I usually there is some sort of site plan that would show how many parking spaces they have, any parking agreement, you know, to, to fulfill those requirements and there would be a, a diagram of the building. It would say this is the part of the building. It's the daycare. I don't know that we need something super detailed because they're not doing any build-out. So I would kinda agree with you on that, but um.
I'd go as far as to say what's here is sufficient.
I, I think so. It is to me.
I want the language.
Yeah.
The language is included. Yeah, if I could, yeah, jump in and I think I'm gonna say the same thing that Andrea was, but in the packet um in the document, I don't think the packet, it's, I only have a printout, so I can't tell you the PDF page number, but in the document that has the P U D ordinance for Gulfview Office Park, you'll see red language in the title that says as amended by ordinance number blank of twenty twenty-four. On page four, so page twelve of your packet, it does have in red the proposed additional language that would be added to the P U D ordinance. So if we legal come back next week, it's going to be with the same language just in a, you know, different formation perhaps, but that language would be to add under phase one permitted uses. Uh item number seven, child daycare center, thirty-six hundred square feet devoted to a child daycare center pursuant to the standards in the Cascade Township zoning ordinance. So I think that is the language.
And to my earlier question, if, if you are telling us as legal counsel tonight that that's the language that you would approve, I don't have a problem with that. I just typically it is vetted by you folks ahead of time and then it comes back to us. So however you wanna handle that, if this is great, that's wonderful. If you want a week to look at it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this language. All we would do is put this in a different format, like ordinance to amend ordinance, but it's kind of already done that.
Format, can you go, can you be specific? I mean, that, that can have kind of.
Whatever, whatever the planning commission prefers. I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that the language was in front of you for, for your consideration. We are happy to put it in another format that has got our stamp of approval and have it for you for next week's meeting.
Member Reese?
I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
But she's saying she's not.
No, no, that's not what I said. Um, exactly. Um, I'm comfortable with this language. The only thing when it reaches the township board, it will be in probably a slightly different format as an ordinance. So that's all more stylistic rather than substantive. I have no problem with the substantive language here.
Are you saying that this, the previous version of ordinance that's been a, approved the previous six times is that the format is not right?
No, that's not what I'm saying either. Sorry, I'm not trying to add confusion to an otherwise confusing uh manner.
I just, I'm trying to understand why we would change the format if we've, we're all pretty familiar with this uh P U D because it's come in front of us so many times.
As I said, it wouldn't be read. We're talking very non-substantive changes. It would say, it would say this section is amended to add number seven. We're talking stylistic changes and not substantive. There's nothing wrong with the ordinance in front of you or the language.
Okay. You'd essentially fill in the blanks.
Fill, yeah, fill in the blanks.
Member Nordike?
Aye.
It would have formatting, it would have formatting on the final page of the amendment stating this is who is approving it and who's certifying that it's adopted.
And that's.
Actually, the applicant indicated that they are running just fine on time. I would love to see what this looks like. And I would at this time uh move to table this for one week until we can have the full version in front of us a week from today.
Support. Member Engel, support. Okay, so motion by member Nordike, supported by member Engel to table this for one week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. We'll see you next week.
All right, so we should be here next week as well.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you too, Carrie.
Ready? Master, master plan update. Hello, Danielle.
Hi, uh nice to see you guys again. Uh, thank you.
Carry the microphone? Just clip it right out.
Completely take over. Um, so I'm here to just kinda give some updates on where we're at with the master plan process and key highlights of the draft, which I'm hoping you guys have had ample time to kinda mow through and and submit any questions, comments, or concerns that you have um to date. Um, I should also note that your packet includes a table of several pages that have um comments that I've received from uh other commissioners to date. Um, so that's basically a definitive list that I've received from um from you folks that so everybody has access to all the same information. Um, I should also note too that those comments that are in red are, I marked, I earmarked those as comments that may require further discussion because they are more substantive rather than just kinda simple words, nippy sort of things that doesn't really change the content of the plan. Um, so that's what that red indicates, that those are the ones that I kinda pulled out to, that perhaps might need a little bit more um sussing through. Um, so some key highlights for the master plan, um for those who maybe have not had a chance to go through it all or just for the benefit of the um public record. Um, key highlights include uh first and foremost, a printable document format. Your current master plan is online only. This is a PDF version or Word version that the township will have. You guys will all have your own beautiful bound copy that you can pull through whenever you want. Um.
Huge.
Yeah, huge. It'll be great. Um, action-oriented, um, uh we have designed this document a little bit different than what your traditional master plan um typically has. In this sense, we kind of flipped it on its head where we put the action stuff and the future land use stuff and the meat of the plan in the beginning of the document and then the existing conditions, demographics, all of that stuff that kinda follows to um serve as part of the foundation for um the decision-making um that you folks will be uh embarking on through the adoption of this plan um is kinda more toward the back of the document. So traditionally, usually you have your existing conditions, goals, and then it kinda leads into future land use. Um, but we kinda flipped it because the more important information or the more um the recommendations and, and the meat of, of this plan is, is on the front. Um, which I believe alludes to a comment that we received from member Bruno, that he was um you know, wasn't sure if that was the, the organization that we wanted to move forward with. So I'll just kinda pose that to you guys to kinda uh think about as we move through this process, which simple fix, but just something to note. Um, this plan also includes a very robust zoning plan. Um, as already alluded in this meeting, your zoning ordinance has a lot of gaps. There's a lot of things that need to be kind of clarified, cleaned up, updated. Um, and the, the primary purpose of this master plan is to serve as your policy guide for decision-making, especially with regard to zoning. You wanna have zoning in a built environment that reflects what the township, the direction that the township is trying to go. Um, so there's a high, well, I'll get into that in a minute. Um, so with regard to the robust zoning policies or um zoning recommendations, we included recommendations for um every zoning district that you have um in the township, processes for redevelopment of planning and developments. Um, which even just sitting in this meeting now, if you guys have revised the same P U D ten, twelve times, maybe that's something to look at. Um, processes for redevelopment of hotels, what that might look like in the future, how to protect the longevity of that type of development. Um, making sure that it doesn't kind of fall into uh disrepair over time, mechanisms and uh tools and recommendations for farmland preservation and rural preservation, um especially uh with regard to green space preservation and so forth. Um, recommendations for neighborhood design, best practices, um connected street networks and so forth. Um, and then some content with regard to appropriate residential densities and um density bonus priorities. So we went through that full exercise and we kinda took a dial back and just said, you know what, we're just gonna say this is the highest priority, medium, low. And then once the commission gets to that point of actually developing that policy, that's when, you know, the point system, however that works out, would work, would come into that conversation. So again, the master plan is intended to be a high-level visioning document and then each of the policies that stem from that are gonna be subsequent and they're gonna have a, a little bit more of a, a longer process or more tedious process to kinda suss out what you want it to say exactly. Um, another noteworthy um aspect of this plan is a development review checklist that we included in here. So that is intended to be utilized by you folks um when you see site plan reviews come forward to you or redevelopment plans come forward to you, that you can use that checklist to determine if that proposal meets the master plan's vision. If it doesn't meet the master plan's vision, then, you know, maybe there's some more conversation to be had with the applicant and how to better meet it, the master plan vision, but it's just another tool and, and another guide for the commission to have to ensure that every uh every case that you review, every action that you take, every motion that you make is reflective of the township's overall vision and, and your, and, and your goals. Um, da, 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 da. Updated demographics, as I already mentioned, um an in-depth future land use plan, which notes again farmland and green space preservation areas, rural preservation areas, um a defined Cascade Village area and what um the intent is for that with regard to zoning in the future. Um, enhanced, excuse me, aesthetic, aesthetic character for Twenty-Eighth Street. How can we elevate existing businesses or buildings or commercial spaces um for, to kind of prime the pump for um redevelopment opportunities, infill development opportunities to um achieve an aesthetic character. That's what the township wants, rather than just having big box after big box after national chain after national chain that isn't necessarily reflective of, of the type of um building and site design and built environment that the township is interested in. Um, and permitting and encouraging redevelopment or infill targeted areas. So again, we want to rather than um emphasize growth, which is not at all the case of this plan, but it is to target redevelopment and infill development opportunities in areas where they are appropriate and leave the rest the way that it is essentially. Um, you know, enhancement here or there as appropriate. Um, establishing a clear utility service boundary. Again, that's very indicative of that targeted growth or that targeted development and redevelopment scenario. Anything outside of that is not, and is not planned to be part of the utility service boundary as in it is um planned to remain either green space as of uh existing character, existing density, rural character, so forth. Um, another piece of this plan too that I should note is the emphasis of um parks and trails in the township and where we would like to um, or where the township would like to target priority um preservation or park areas. Um, we've been in conversations with the um Township Parks Director and um so we've been working on that map together to make sure that it is, um everyone's on the same page with what that, um those priority areas look like. Um, hmm, as far as um goals and objectives, I, I won't go through every single one of those, assuming that you guys kind of already have some familiarity with that. If you would like me to go into a lot of detail with that, I will. Um, but I just kind of some highlights there, um preserving and strengthen residential neighborhoods. So by that meaning preserve the existing character and strengthen in this particular scenario could mean adding sidewalks, street lights or something like that. Nothing that would necessarily change any density or existing character or anything like that. So essentially the major theme of this plan is preservation where appropriate and um targeted redevelopment and infill development where appropriate. Um, preserving open space and natural areas, um enhance the viability of township businesses. So how do we balance this um um important element of ensuring that the existing businesses in Cascade Township are um thriving and that they continue to thrive and we're, you know, welcoming that um, you know, folks to grow their businesses here, just as we saw tonight. But of course, that balancing act with ensuring that there's not any um adverse effects to your existing character in, in um residential areas and uh the rural areas. Um, protection and preservation of your uh natural spaces and features, the rivers, the hills, the woodlands, all of that stuff is, uh, they're all very important aspects of what make the township unique, what make it a place that people want to be. They want, they have a high quality of work, life here. We wanna preserve that. Um, uh, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Um, as, does anyone have any questions before I kinda move forward?
Members?
With any next steps?
No, here, keep, keep going.
Okay. So having said all of that, um, what I would envisioning for the next steps of this process, should the commission feel that it is appropriate at this time, we would love to open, uh recommend opening the sixty-three day comment period to the township board. Now, this isn't necessarily saying that the uh planning commission is got their, you know, stamp of okay on this and we're ready for approval. But at this time, it is the planning commission um per the uh Planning Enabling Act that you would make a, a motion of approval to forward a recommendation to the township board to open the sixty-three day comment period. So it's the township board that has the official say in whether or not that that comment period is open. Um, but I should note that there is opportunity to still kinda wordsmith things through that sixty-three days, but I should note that anything that's substantial. opportunity to still kind of wordsmith things through that sixty-three days, but I should note that anything that's substantial would have to be kicked back to another comment period if it's going to drastically change the plan in any way, shape or form. So, you know, of course, like if if we're looking at, you know, shifting some future land use categories around a little bit or wordsmithing some stuff or reorganizing the document a little bit, that's not really substantive to like the plan's content or the overall goals and objectives or direction. But anything that's that's a major revision will have to have to go back through that process. So just kind of note that. So if there's something that you find to be kind of a red flag that you would like to address in this plan, that it's best to do it now before the comment period starts because then that just kind of, you know, snowballs into something else. But so at this point, if if the Planning Commission is happy with where the documents at and most importantly, that you feel comfortable with this being public facing, because what happens during sixty-three day comment comment period is that township staff or myself would send out a letter to every neighboring jurisdiction, railroad companies, utility companies, county, all of those folks would have would be aware that this plan is is available for comment. So, you know, this would be public facing and people would be notified. So just note that too, that if you don't feel comfortable at that at this stage yet, just want to make you fully aware of what this entails.
So it would be on our website?
Yep.
For everybody to see.
Yep, exactly. Sixty-three days, and then after that point, any further revisions, that may or may not happen after that sixty-three days, and then we'd move forward to the adoption process if it is appropriate at that time. Any questions?
Any concerns?
You made reference to how should I say this, fixing some things, so to speak, in our processes and whatnot. And maybe that wasn't the word you used, but we used to have a specific work plan every year. Some of the members that have been here a while, we used to do that at the end of the year, we'd have a work plan of goals for the following year. And then the previous planning director would do that. And then there, you know, we'd have a, it was an obtainable list, right? And and we have gotten off, we tried a different method, I guess, for a while. And it seems to me that there are a lot of things that we try to amend or change here that don't really seem to ever get across the finish line. And I don't know if that's a if the bottleneck is a staff issue, if it's a board issue, if it's we dropped the ball here. I just know that we certainly need some help to keep track of those things better and to make sure they get over the finish line. I don't know if that's necessarily a master plan thing, but when you're talking, it made me think of that at the beginning, how you're talking about revisiting some things. And and so I I just wanted to see that before I forgot, because I I think the people that need to hear it are listening.
In light of that, the master plan does include some high level language in there about essentially kind of buttoning up the review processes. And I think a lot of that, though, also stems from your zoning ordinance, because your zoning ordinance should really spell out this is your site plan review criteria, this is what happens when you approve, deny, table, this is what happens from start to finish through that project. And I think that the master plan sets up a great foundation to subsequently move in that direction of saying, okay, we have our vision and now we need to slide into the the what are we going to do about it space. And that zoning ordinance being typically the next step of a master plan is updating all of that language. So your point is heard, is my long way of saying that.
And related to that, page seventy-nine talks about site plan review and procedures, and it kind of addresses, I think, what remember Risi was talking about, that we need to set goals and then follow up on those goals on a regular basis. Any other comments, Rob?
Did you say that now is the time to point out like language, things that we might question, or did you say that do that within the next sixty-three days?
Depends on what kind of language. So if it's something substantial that should be addressed, or if it's just kind of like a wordsmithy typo thing, that can be addressed during that sixty-three days.
Okay, I have two things that I noticed on page forty-six. I'm not sure that this is the time to point this out again, but so we're talking about the part under the public participation, Article Five, wait, two. Some things crossed out, so letter C says persons must be recognized by and shall direct comments to the chairperson. I'm not sure why we would not want the chairperson to address them before they just start speaking.
It's a different document.
Okay. Did you have any, did you get a chance to go through the master plan?
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, that's okay.
Anything else, Rob?
No, no, no.
I I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments here. I did have a chance to go through it. This chair, I better do it. There are some pages that really I I'm really excited about, page thirty-six, talking about farmland preservation. A lot of us are on that subcommittee, and I'm just happy to see this included in here in a very pronounced way. Also, page sixty-one, you're talking about agricultural and rural district recommendations and private road restrictions, which I think are great. That was recommended by member Bruno at one of our sessions. I like page sixty-two talking about the Thornapple Crescent Greenway, which is an outgrowth of our airport study, airport commerce study. I like page seventy-one talk talking about density bonuses, which is related to farmland preservation. And, you know, transition of development rights to areas where you want to see growth, but not out of the farmland.
We've done a lot of heavy lifting there.
Yeah, yeah. And page seventy-five, talking about right size infrastructure investment, green space preservation, park target areas, Thornapple Crescent Greenway and other zoning recommendations. And finally, page seventy-nine, as I mentioned before, site plan review and procedures, which talks long term. You know, let's make a plan and then follow through on it. And Mauricio.
You had mentioned earlier, the items in red might be things that we want to have more conversation about. Do you want us to have that conversation now, or do you want us to do it later?
So I guess that's up to you guys. If you feel comfortable having that conversation now, I think that would be great so we can keep this process moving. However, I do recognize that there are two members that are not here to have that conversation.
I guess I was just yeah, that is part of the problem. And the other problem is I can't open it on my screen. So I don't think it's is our, is the master plan's document saved to these computers right now?
I just thought about that. We never added that. It's too big. There's a page that we want to review. You guys can't see the screen.
Because I don't have a way to download it. Why, I if we don't all have it though, I don't think it really it 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 really works to talk about it right now. I guess that's what I was getting. Well, we can see those screens.
You can?
Yeah.
You have a page, I can at least, you're right.
Right, I know, but I don't have a way to scroll. We can't all work with that right now, I guess, is what I'm saying. If if I could sign into my email, I could pull it up that way, but I we're handicapped at the moment. I appreciate the effort for the save, but I don't know the page number specifically. But I was going to say, like, if we were to talk about some of the, we'll flip back to the other screen in a second. You know, going down the list of stuff that's in red, the first thing was that Star Glenwood Hills area. I seem to think that that seemed like a catchall for everything in there. And I I don't know if that was our intent, but I I guess I I felt like maybe we needed to at least verify that. So that, for me, that's something that I think we should all take a closer look at, maybe on our own time before we come back next time. When we can actually see it and and read through it. But it seems like we have, you know, high density residential, there's industrial there, there's there's commercial, there's a hotel, you know, there's fast food. It's just, there's a lot going on right there. And so I I I just wanted to make sure that we're on the right page there, because I have a feeling that that is probably an area that's going to see some redevelopment throughout the duration of this plan. So I want to make sure we have it right. I think we have a tendency here to to react more, and I'd like to be on the front end of that stuff, not on the tail end.
Absolutely. So if I could speak to that a little bit as to why it is the way that it is. So through our preliminary discussions when months ago, if you guys recall, when we had that workshop and we were kind of talking through like what land uses are more most appropriate for which of these mixed use districts. So the reason why both of those were combined into one was because that conversation kind of led into the fact that all of those land uses would be appropriate for both of those. So we thought, well, you know, in rather than like complicating this by making them two separate districts that essentially permit the same thing and have the same density and have the same building height and have the same permitted land uses and so forth, that those just became the Star Glenwood rather than having the Star Glenwood. And sorry, one more note too, and also the noting the similar nature of existing character.
I agree with them. Joe's gonna hate me for this, but it's on the west side of the expressway. He always said it was a buffer. But it is west of
Fielder's side of the tracks.
It is, it's west of ninety-six, which doesn't apply to an airport, we'll talk later. So, but it is west of ninety-six, and I I tend to you know, what happens there is, you know.
Over there. And and now that you say that, I kind of remember that conversation before I say.
Isn't that what we talked about, Timmy? So that's that's how I, in my mind, rationalize them being, I hear what you're saying, though.
Yeah, I mean, residential, industrial, commercial and higher density residential all rolled into the same area. It's it's west of the expressway. I suppose. I just, I feel like we could be maybe a little more organized than that. But I I hear you saying, yeah, I just want to be just thrown out there. You guys are content, then I will gladly move forward.
I think in this sense, also, this is kind of where that true meaning of mixed use comes in. And when you have that mix of the the higher density residential that are coupled with commercial or office or light industrial or so forth, that may medical offices, things like that. That's not entirely uncommon for what you see in the West Michigan suburb area. Like if you I hate to say this, but if you go into Kentwood, you can see that there are multifamily buildings adjacent to
That's exactly the point I pointed at.
I feel like the entire city of Kentwood is all mixed use, right? I mean.
A lot of it is pretty, yeah, and I I think that
Why not make it all?
To that point, though, I know that that's not the direction that the township would like to go, but what I'm getting at is when you have, when you open the door.
You have to have it somewhere. And why not next to Kentwood?
Where it transitions well.
That's exactly right.
And then use the highway as the buffer.
Right, unless it's near.
Unless it's nearby.
And Commissioner Risi, I might say too, if you think of say, a small storefront where somebody wants to own an apartment over their storefront, and then they want to manufacture their own T-shirts or something small. So now you've got kind of that industrial, residential, commercial all mixed into one. We're not talking about, you know, a power plant in your single family residential neighborhood. It's kind of this conglomeration of all those uses in a smaller scale.
I'm I'm content. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page and it was intentional and that we weren't missing something, so.
Thanks for bringing it up.
I'd like to make a suggestion. We're missing two of our members here right now, but member Roland, I believe, is going to be back next Monday. Member Bruno will not be back until April first. So I'd like to suggest, I I just went through this this afternoon and read it off the the website, printed out what I could. It's terrible copy. I'm going to ask that the staff print out copies of the report, the master plan, and hand them out next Monday.
You all want digital?
I want a hard copy that I can look at and mark up. And then make sure that everybody at the table gets it, plus member Roland. And then give us at least two weeks to go through it and respond back to you on that. I I think what I saw, it looks great, but I need more time to make sure I get the detailed input.
I would like to make a suggestion that at the next meeting that we discuss this, if the internet isn't working, there's a digital copy on each of the computers so that it's quick and easy for, you know, say Chair Moxley says, on page forty-nine, we can all get there and look at it. And I think that's better than thumbing through forty-nine pages of paper. So that would be my
Well, yeah, let's, what I want to do, if I'm sorry, I won't interrupt you for long. What, who would actually like a digital copy? Because I don't want to get it to you for the next planning commission meeting. I'd rather get it to you whether we have somebody drop it off at your house or you guys stop in. Who would actually like a paper copy? And they will all be on and I'll get an extra one just in case you want, you want a paper? So four paper copies and five. All right, nobody else is going to change your mind?
I'll take a paper with two, so I can make my marks on that.
Okay, I, you know, I'm gonna get
If you're gonna make them, go ahead and scratch.
All right. Are you okay if it's, if it's double sided?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, it's fine. They can be black and white.
And leave out the blank pages.
So that's a formatting thing, because the the maps are eleven by seventeen. So if, you know, it gets messy when you print it out, that's why there's blank parts.
But I still want a digital copy for the meeting.
The, I promise you, that was again, my oversight, because it was too big. I forgot to put it on.
I said at the meeting, I want a digital copy.
You have access to a digital copy through the Cascade Township website.
But the website doesn't work.
Right.
No, but you want to look at it at home.
No, I'm saying at the meeting. I want to be able to have it at the meeting.
Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had internet?
It would make things so much easier.
Why do we not?
I don't know.
That's what I was gonna say.
Just like remember, we talked to Ryan.
Just feels like it's been more than three months, and yet we do have internet. If we're able to have Zoom meetings, we just don't have access to it up here for some reason.
Everything in here has been falling apart for a very long time. This stopped working when Steve Peterson was here. And I don't think anything has been fixed since then. Or very slowly, I should say. It has been a lot of systems have been, at some point, they were talking about redoing all of this, and then COVID happened, and it just never, it never happened after that.
So we'll do our best on that one, but we'll have paper copies. We'll work on putting them out tomorrow. And then we'll just touch base, just touch base with Chairman Moxley on how you want to pick it up, if you want to pick it up or you want it delivered. And we'll get it to you.
I'll stop by. I'm over there every other day anyway, and I'll pick one up.
Okay.
Chair Moxley? Just a thought. We've spent a lot of time on this. Do we think that it's ninety-five percent there? And the reason I'm asking is that we don't think that we're going to make substantive changes. Do we get this ball rolling down the hill? Because we can always restart it if we do make substantive changes.
You're referring to the sixty day?
I am.
Yeah, I have no problem.
We can open it, and then we can prematurely close it, make our changes and reopen it again. And again, there's been a lot of work. I know Timmy has put in many, 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 many man-hours. You you see like that there's very much, you know, to go, Timmy, like in terms of like substantive changes. Is there any reason why we wouldn't at least try to start the sixty-three day period?
I think you can comfortably start that sixty-three day period. There's been a lot of time put in. Yeah, Ken's been there, done tremendous amount of work on it.
And when you look down at this list, I mean, there's a page and a half of comments here, many of which are redundant over each other. If that's all there is as far as concerns here, I I see no reason to not start the plot.
I didn't see any concerns. I find concerns.
Right, there's nothing real substantive.
I mean, but as a rule, I typically find stuff, and I I didn't, you know. I mean, but as a rule, I typically find stuff, and I I didn't, you know, to your credit, listening to us, right? Um, and so I just, I I just asked that question, right? Like, is there any harm in starting this? Correct me if I'm wrong, we can reset that sixty-three. I'm looking to our legal expert. We can reset that sixty-three day comment period at any time, correct?
Correct.
So with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we uh make, that we make a recommendation to the township to uh approve and open up the sixty-three day comment period.
Member Nordike made the motion. Member Engle supported the motion to open the sixty-three day window. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you.
Um, I apologize, I was taking notes. Uh, did the motion state that you were recommending the Township Board open sixty-three days? Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that list correctly. All right, well, thank you guys so much. It's been a really fun and creative process, and I, we're we're gonna get there.
And you have done a great job. And I'd still like to request a hard copy if I may.
I got you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Article number eight.
Oh, wait. Oh, there my.
Ordinance update, Chapter twenty-three public hearing.
You have the wrong.
I'm looking at the hard copy here.
Uh, here, use this hard copy.
Ordinance amendment, Chapter twenty-three public hearing, rescheduled for February fifth.
There wasn't one that had two sevens on it. I don't know how the wrong draft got out there.
The chairman ended up with the wrong one.
I have no idea.
That's a good thing the vice chair knows what's going on.
Let's go to ordinance nine, or Article nine ordinance amendment, Chapter twenty-three public hearing, scheduled from February fifth.
Great to see all the public.
A lot of public here, too.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, Laura Genovich from Foster Swift Township Attorneys.
Welcome, Laura.
Glad to be here. Uh, good to see everyone. Um, what we have, and I'll let Andrea jump in as needed as well. Um, we have an ordinance that would amend the zoning ordinance to move out the Planning Commission establishment or regulations um from the zoning ordinance so that the Township Board can consider adopting that as a police power ordinance. The Planning Commission ordinance, which is required by the Planning Enabling Act, is typically done as a police power ordinance. Um, it's usually not found in a zoning ordinance, so I think as a lot of different things were being reviewed here that came to light and there was a desire to uh move it to that. So I understand the Township Board, I think, on its agenda for twenty eighth, the twenty-eighth, has the police power ordinance, which would adopt kind of parallel or similar provisions as a police power ordinance. So this is just taking it out of the zoning ordinance, so the Township Board can do it a different way.
Okay, so we're basically pulling uh the Planning Commission out of Chapter twenty-three with this and leaving it strictly for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Police power ordinance would be put in Chapter twenty-three else.
Oh, you mean, you'd be, but you'd be leaving, um, you'd be leaving the Zoning Board of Appeals in Chapter twenty-three, is what you meant. Correct, yes.
I mean, that's what it says.
Yes.
Administrative procedures of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Correct. The Zoning Board of Appeals would still be governed here in the zoning ordinance, which is appropriate and typical, but the Planning Commission establishment would not be in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for legal counsel?
None here.
Okay, uh.
I had a question. I got a question here. Let me find it. Let me find it. Oh, here we go.
Member Reese, question.
Do you typically see the duties and functions of the Planning Commission uh spelled out in that type of detail in the bylaws?
So I know we're gonna talk about the bylaws. There are some things that are typically in the bylaws and some that are typically in the planning um uh in the, I say Planning Enabling Act, in the ordinance establishing the Planning Commission. So we can talk about those in details that might fit more under the bylaws discussion because yeah, because this doesn't actually adopt anything other than taking out the Planning Commission.
Well, except for in in Chapter twenty-three, it talks about, uh, where is it here? I guess my my concern is I'm my my concern is that there seems to be a lot of overlap between the bylaws in Chapter twenty-three. And I see some of the notes that that Leslie made on here clean up some of that, but there's still, with regard to the scheduling and to the duties, it seems that uh there's a little bit of conflict there. And and so my concern is that when we originally went down this process, we were told that we could put anything in the bylaws we wanted that didn't conflict with Chapter twenty-three. Now that we're gonna change Chapter twenty-three to the new police powers ordinance, uh, which is fine, but now it seems like they can conflict and it's not a big deal. And I don't think that's the motive. I just, there seems to be one seems to be much more vague than the other, but one's limiting the other from doing what it says.
We certainly have some thoughts on things issuing the bylaws versus the ordinance, and as you said, Leslie has those in the comments on the bylaws. For example, meeting frequency would be appropriate in the bylaws rather than in the ordinance.
Absolutely.
We here can't control what's in the police power ordinance necessarily because the board will adopt that. So your point is well taken.
But we're supposed to set a public hearing for Chapter twenty-three, but the draft for Chapter twenty-three is in conflict with our draft's bylaws. Or maybe I should say our bylaws are in conflict with the draft for twenty-three. So I kind of feel like we're.
Um, so I think what you're looking at with twenty-three here, what's left on the page is just for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're taking out all the Planning Commission stuff out of twenty-three.
I'm referring to what is in the police powers ordinance.
But we, but the Planning Commission doesn't set a public hearing on the pub- on the police power ordinance.
Okay. You're right, we don't.
Okay.
So I guess that would be a conversation for the bylaw conversation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Then I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support. Okay, motion by Member Reese, supported by Member Engle, to open for public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Anybody online?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Member by, motion by Member Reese and supported by Member Engle, close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Member, motion passes six-zero. Further discussion by planning commissioners?
Now I'm able to pick up where I left off.
Went through the motion.
So back to the the conversation there with the bylaws. I guess I'll let somebody else go first if they want, but I was just, that was right, I guess I'm a little um I I'm a little concerned that, I guess my question is, are we out of order in the sense of um, working through the bylaws before we know what Chapter twenty-three is gonna read?
I will answer that question, although I think we're still in the previous agenda item dealing with just taking it out, so I'm not sure on the bylaws yet, but I think you could, you could still adopt the bylaws now and make tweaks if necessary and have those bylaws, you know, you know, presented to the Township Board. So the bylaws are not, you know, unamendable. You can certainly change them if there is an issue, if you want to go forward tonight, and a lot of work has been put into them.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of work's been put into it. Okay.
Um, so there's nothing else we have to do, excuse me, with respect to the public hearing. We're finished with Article nine.
Well, are you, are you gonna make a a recommendation to, or make a motion to recommend it to the Township Board? You've had a public hearing on an ordinance amendment.
Okay.
So now the next step would be for a mo- entertain a motion to recommend that the Township Board adopt this ordinance, taking the Planning Commission part out of the zoning ordinance.
I I didn't see that here.
I didn't see it on the agenda, so.
That that is what Article nine.
No, it just says public hearing. That's why I started talking about the bylaws after we did the public hearing. I thought we were through it.
It's for the ordinance amendment. You can certainly make that recommendation now.
That'd be appropriate in terms of what's on the agenda.
It is. There's actually no legal requirement to even have an agenda, so I'm not concerned about the legality of you making a recommendation on that now.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to recommend that the Township Board amend Chapter twenty-three as outlined in our board packet.
Support. Motion by Member Engle, uh, supported by Member Nordike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes six-zero. And we will take the uh take the uh Planning Commission out of Chapter twenty-three. Okay, now for the big discussion. Planning Commission bylaws, Article ten. We have uh spent a fair amount of time on this, and Andrea has spent a lot of time analyzing the last version from February fifth to today's version, the latest and greatest, which really cleaned up a lot in the process. And I want to thank Member Bruno for all the time he spent going through all this stuff and uh helping us with the meeting we had back, what was it, on the fourteenth, I believe. Uh, there were eight of us at the table talking about uh what needs to be changed and changing the order of everything there. So uh, our new planning director, Andrea, has handed out a uh spreadsheet that gives us a a listing of the changes that have been made. Uh, we'd like to go through that one item at a time uh to make sure everybody is in agreement. And I'm literally going to ask for approval on the individual items as we proceed. I'm gonna ask Andrea to read them, uh, both the February fifth version versus what we're seeing in the uh, February uh, or what is it now? February twenty-sixth version.
Was the last version.
The latest version.
We're going to read both versions aloud?
I think that if you want, i- it's up to the chair. I don't, some of it is pretty.
Yeah, some of it's real quick and simple.
Explained in the document, so at least go through this document.
This is just a good opportunity to ask questions as we go through it. I spent a lot of time today comparing the two to see where the changes were made.
So, Chair.
Everybody should have one of these.
Just just one question for.
Yes, Member Ringo.
So we are going to go through, you said items, we're gonna go through article by article and ask for approval on each separate article.
Yes.
So we can do this kind of two ways. We, well, three ways. We could just say, we're happy with everything. We actually read all of our packet. We looked at every single detail and we love it all and we can adopt it. Or you can say, I hate it all and not adopt it. Or.
Those are our three choices.
We, we would kind of like to blanket approve everything that just says moved. So break, blanket approved the reorganization of the document where each of you, you could see the first moved is number seven, and it says two-point-four has been changed from section eight-point-one. There's no substantive changes. They're exactly the same words. Um, it's just taking the language that was in one section, cutting it, pacing it, and putting it in another section. As we talked about, you know, Bruno had mentioned, I'd love to be able to write this in the who, what, where, why, how structure. That's not exactly what he said, but, and you could see that in each section on your February twenty-twenty-three or twenty-third um section where he says, this is the why, this is the when. So we could blanket approve all of the moved sections.
It's twenty-two sections out of the fifty-six listed.
Yes, in consensus vote. Then we can just kind of go through and say, one, does anybody have any concerns with it? Okay, we're happy. Let's just get a consensus vote. And then we'll make one motion at the end to approve all of the items that have, that we've decided we all agree on, or at least we have a majority of.
Can I have a motion to that effect? To approve the items that were simply moved.
I'd like to go through the red. But, well, maybe not, so I guess. I already said my piece.
Motion to approve the items that were simply moved.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Yeah, you don't have to do a motion. You can do all of these items just by consensus. Does everyone agree, rather than a formal motion that has to be recorded with votes? And then do one final motion at the end. The the alternative is you're gonna have, you know, thirty motions in your minutes, which is not really required for this.
Okay, okay, so we just need a consensus vote.
Yeah, just, you know, does everybody agree with this? Yeah, does anybody have a problem with any of the ones moving like that?
Okay, we have.
Fine, but we do have a motion on the table, though.
Yeah.
We do have a motion on the table.
I will draw my second to the motion.
Perfect. Can we vote by consensus? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Wonderful.
The consensus item passes six-zero.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so that takes care of twenty-two of the items listed.
Okay, so the first one then would be.
Confused than I was before.
Yeah, it's not a motion. It doesn't need to necessarily be announced, just for reaching a consensus.
I just have the copy of the actual ordinance or the bylaws, the redline copy that came in the email.
You have in your packet on page.
Thirty-seven? Mine's not blue, but.
Thirty-seven, yes.
Okay.
He has, just for record-keeping, a modification of that that just adds your names and says what we did there.
Okay.
You will see the moved i- items are seven, eight, nine, eleven.
Okay.
You'd like to go.
He, he, no, no, he was holding up a different, a different piece of paper than all of us have, so that's why we were thrown off. We, we don't have the fancy colored version and with extra, extra characters. Oh, it's fine. I just, that was why we were confused, because.
The chair got the good stuff.
Yeah, right.
I may.
I was just using the redline copy, which has the comments right there, so you know exactly what's going on.
Yes.
Well, as we go through it, I'll tell you which ones are blue.
The blue item.
Yeah, and and you'll know the section.
I don't know what the color means, so.
Blue means moved.
Just move.
Yeah, you don't need to know.
All right, thank you. I'm not a need at all basis.
At at the risk, excuse me, Chair.
Yes, Member Ringo.
We have six articles in these bylaws. Am I correct?
In the amended.
In the amended.
Copy of six articles.
Would be walk through each of the articles, one through six, and see if any members of the
What a novel idea.
Commission has any problems with the with the current draft, and if they don't, we approve Article one and Article two and move through it like that.
Great way to do it.
If you leave my table, I'm gonna lose it all.
I promise. Whatever that was, I won't do it. I don't want to, I don't want to see that, Andrew. It just seems like a simple way to do that.
Just so you all know, I've probably got six copies of the bylaws that have come to us at one date or another.
Five of those away.
Yes, and we will, you know, I'll make sure that this is updated on the website once we adopt it, so that it's very clear which version.
So the bylaws will be on the website?
Yeah, we'll likely just put those on the website. If you would like them, they're not necessary.
No, I. If the internet worked, I'd be able to look them up.
Okay, well, let's start.
She walked right into it. I'm sorry. She walked right into it. I I couldn't.
Let's get started. Member Ringo, Article one, authority and scope. Any changes?
I don't, I don't have any proposed changes to Article one, and I would make a motion that we adopt Article one as drafted and included in the, in the board pack. The commission's pack.
I like that one.
Consensus vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six-zero, okay.
Are are you intending to make formal motions that are recorded as a motion and vote in the minutes?
These are consensus votes.
So it's either a motion that's recorded as a motion with the votes in the minutes, or it's just, we agree. We don't need to yet have a motion and vote unless we want it recorded, just because the person taking the minutes is looking over at me with panic. We don't need to yet have a motion and vote unless we want it recorded. Just because the person taking the minutes is looking over at me with panic.
I see that. Can we just do a show of hands?
Yeah.
Let's just do a show of hands on each article and then
On the other hand, there's only six articles. That's six motions.
And if we However, as long as we're all on the same page with what we're doing, I don't mind how you do it. Either way is perfectly lawful. It's just a matter of convenience and efficiency.
So once we get through six, we're done in the process. If we do it by motion.
I would still like a whole document one. That would just be odd.
We can do that at the end.
Okay.
What do you recommend?
Either one is lawful, as long as you have a motion at the end.
I think she just wants us to be consistent.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, how do you want it?
I think it's, yeah, I defer to the chair.
I want a motion on each of the six items.
Understood.
Six articles.
So we're on Article Two now?
So moving on to Article Two, membership and organization. Any discussion? Obviously, Page Two has a lot of changes and corporations, but I do think it looks good from what I saw.
You don't want to stay?
Bye, Danielle. Thanks for coming. Great job.
I guess my only question here is the question that is on Number 2.7 that says, does this, does this or will this exist regarding a conflict of interest policy? Where do we stand with that?
Do we have a conflict of interest?
Yes, this is addressed in the, in the draft, in the memo, that there is a township conflict of interest, interest, or
Is it a township version or is it the one that we had as a planning commission?
So the one that you had as a planning commission is still in the, the police power.
Okay.
But there is a conflict of interest document that is provided at the township that would, at this point, we, our bylaws would go by that.
Great, okay.
So we will address the other one. I just noticed today that it was still in there. We'll address that. I'll, we are intending on going through this and making sure that in advance of the Tuesday or the 28th board meeting, that some of the work that we've put into these bylaws, at least is communicated to the township board for chapter or for the police power ordinance. They can do with it what they'd like. They can choose to implement the changes or not, but there are a little bit of discrepancies that we will bring to them, and that is one of them.
Member Ringo. I would also note, just for the record, that I believe that the Robert Rules of Order also have, which are adopted in here, also have their own conflict of interest policy. So in effect, we are covered on this issue.
So you have to have a conflict of interest policy by law, either established by the planning commission or the township. That's always going to supersede Robert's rules. So Robert's rules are a guide. A lot of Robert's rules, some will apply, some doesn't apply. The conflict of interest policy of the township is obviously much more specific to township business and officials.
My only point was that if there is concern about us not having that covered, we at least have guidance from Robert's rules.
You do, as well as Michigan common law.
Just fall, fall back.
So given that, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of Article Two.
Support. Moved by Member Ringo, supported by Member Reese.
Just a point of clarification for this, you are approving it and not recommending approval because the, the bylaws.
You are right. You are absolutely right.
Just want, just so the minutes are clear.
I will amend my motion. I would make a motion that the planning commission approve Article Two of its proposed bylaws.
I'll support it with an apology to Matty.
Hey, moved by Member Ringo, supported by Member Reese. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Moving on to Article Three, duties and responsibilities.
Yeah, so, may I go first?
Yes, Member Reese.
I noticed in here now that it says preparation of an annual capital improvements program. I think the CIP used to come in front of the planning commission, uh, which I think is a good thing. I think it's good for the township board to have that come in front of us too. I think it, it gives them some, some teeth behind them or somebody has a concern with it, but but my concern is that, again, these duties are different than the duties in the police power ordinance. And so I feel like there's a there's several different versions, and I don't know how you, I feel like that, I, I feel like maybe there's either it shouldn't be in the bylaws or it shouldn't be in the police power ordinance, but I feel like they both have a little bit, and maybe one just needs to have all of it.
So the CIP is not required because you don't have your own water and sewer. So for either of them to make it an obligation, I'm not sure is, is necessary under the law. I think the township board is the one that would have the authority to require the planning commission to do a CIP. So my recommendation would be to take it out of the bylaws.
I concur with that.
Yeah.
I agree. Discretion of the board.
So would you just change that language, just required by law?
I would, like, he said, leave it at discretion of the, discretion of the board, so the other item on here that was in red was next paragraph, and it talks about the conflict of interest again. So I would make a recommendation that the planning commission accept Section Three with, with the opinion of the township board related to the CIP.
You want to recommend our approval. You want, we want this proved, not recommended. Did I say recommend? You make a motion that we approve Article Three.
Okay, I thought that exactly. Apologize. We approve Article Three with allowing the township board's opinion on the CIP.
Support. Okay, a motion by Member Reese, supported by Member Nordike, to approve Article Three. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Six zero. Article Four, meetings. Items to discuss or change.
Well, again, this is where I, I have conflict with the police powers ordinance. The meeting schedule here is completely different than what's there. And I've, I voiced this before, but with pop-up school elections and all sorts of strange events throughout the year that can happen, I think there needs to be flexibility in both documents for the chair or staff to meander away from the first and third meeting. Sometimes, you know, spring break is not a holiday, but it's sometimes it's at a different time. And, and there's a need to move those meetings. I think it's fine to put in the document that it is anticipated the regular schedule will be the first and third weeks, but understanding that there may be times where that schedule is altered due to, you know, due to problems.
Uh, we agree with that and think first the meeting schedule is more appropriate in the bylaws than in the police power ordinance. So that'll be, you know, we'll communicate that to the township board. Um, and that flexibility, I think, is present in the bylaws. So, um, can't, you know, we can't control tonight what gets approved by the board, but, um, I agree with that comment.
Oh, but it does seem that if the, if you were working on these simultaneously, that the draft version going in front of the board would be reflective of what, I feel like we're in different lands and we should be traveling together down the same road.
Would you agree with this version?
I do agree with this.
Okay.
Yep. And I think that just happened because it pulled out what was already in your zoning ordinance to put it in a police power without making substantive changes, because the initial direction was just, we don't want it in zoning, we want it in police power.
Okay.
This gives us a lot of flexibility.
Yes, this is, this is better wording. I agree. So I would make a motion that we approve Article Four of the proposed planning commission bylaws as included in our pack.
Support. Motion by Member Engle, supported by Member Reese. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Article Five, procedures. Comments or discussions?
Um, I had a question for my peers here. Five point two, letter E. No person may speak more than once during any public comment period. Think that is typically the way we do things, but I can think of a handful of times where we've let people talk more than once. Do we want it to be that specific?
Oh, I like the specificity of it. I, I know we have typically done it for clarification.
We have. When there's a small group and somebody raises their hand, we've let them go a second time. The chair usually is the one
The chair has discretion, but the problem with not having any limit is you could say, well, you have a five, five minute per person, but if you don't limit the number of times, they could say, well, I'm going to take five, five minute periods and, and speak far longer. So it is very common to have this in public comment policies, recognizing that there will be times when in the chair's discretion, you might acknowledge someone to clarify something.
So the chair will still have discretion even though it doesn't say that on here?
The chair always has some level of discretion in running the meeting. Yep.
Would, I don't mean to wordsmith this, but we have, typically we have more than one public comment section. So could we just insert the word any single public comment period? So that folks could speak.
That is what's meant there. That is what's meant there. Yep. So you could speak at first public comment and second public comment.
So they can say, no person may speak more than once during any single public comment period.
If the planning commission thinks that makes it clearer, I'm not opposed to that.
And how do you folks feel about that? I mean
I like giving them the opportunity to speak during each of those public comment periods.
Yeah, for a single.
Yeah.
Just isn't clear that, that they can
Well, I think it is clear. That's that whole Section F that was removed, I think, right?
Yeah, right. So this, this sort of I see your sense. Flashes that out a little bit. I mean, I would, if I speak, I could look at it and say, I spoke on one issue uh, in an early public comment period, but now I can't get up and talk to, speak to a different issue later on. And, and I don't think that would be fair to the public.
Right. The intention is that they could speak at each public comment period. So the first plus at a public hearing and then if you have a second public comment.
That's why it doesn't say that they can only speak once during the meeting. It's once during the public comment period.
Once during any public, I guess that
I think, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Any is all of them, but
Yeah, it's fine.
I guess I would make a motion that we approve Article Five. Uh, the bylaws, adding the word single between any and public in subpar E of 5.2.
I have a few other comments.
Yes, Member Richardson.
Um, so 5.2C crosses off must be recognized by, and I know that Cascade Township doesn't typically have a bunch of rowdy meetings in here. But that does help um, address the person that's about to speak so that there aren't multiple people like angrily shouting out things at once. I don't predict that being a problem for us, but I don't see why we would cross that off.
You've been here long enough.
Okay, well, so to me, like, I don't, I don't think crossing that off is a good idea. Like, I do like the idea that the chairperson will address the person that's about to say, okay, you may speak now, rather than letting them just randomly, isn't that what we're crossing off there in Section C? Am I misunderstanding that?
Person's real direct comments through the chairperson, chairperson.
But why cross off that you're going to allow them to speak?
I think it's redundant is why it's, it's being crossed out. That, C is just simply allowing the, the chairperson to control the meeting and to make sure that they are talking to the, to the planning commission and not to people sitting behind them. I think that's, we are, we are recognizing them by having them come up here and give their name and their address.
Okay.
That's been taken care of already.
I think if you wanted to get into that level of detail, you would have to address the problem of people in the audience asking questions of the planning commission. It's not good for us to enter into public conversation. It's public comment. It's their time to talk. And, and far too often, there are questions asked, and we get into a back and forth, and then that's when things can get out of control. So, you know, really, it's, it needs to be specific that they are here to comment. If they ask questions, maybe the chairperson or the planning commission will direct staff to reply to those later, you know, down the road, but we don't have to answer specific questions at that time.
Okay.
It's just to comment.
I also, and, uh, Member Bruno reminded me of this, I also do think that Section F or Point F, whatever we call that, should not be crossed on. Um, and I, you know, there are other townships that have something similar to this in there. So on 5.2F, and the reason why that sticks out to me is we had at least two times in the past year that I can recall where we had some sort of coordinated I don't know, a battery of us by a group of people that basically passed a binder back and forth where they said, well, we get five minutes. So we brought in 20 people, and we're going to just redo this two-hour script. And I think F here would give us the opportunity to say we're going to limit that, where we didn't have the ability to do that before.
I don't think you legally can do
Correct. Yeah, somebody could stand up and just read out of the dictionary for five minutes if they want to. It's their five minutes, and to restrict based on content raises constitutional concerns, because then you're saying you can only have the five minutes if we agree with the content of your speech. So we'd strongly recommend against, um, having a provision that would allow, based on the content, determining that it's redundant, to cut it off. The exception to that would be if it were truly threatening or obscene or disrupting the peace, certainly. Um, if they're threatening to kill you, that would be a different story. But beyond those exceptions, regulating based on content is something we would advise against.
Could, but technically, this is just a procedure question. If we had two comment periods and we limited the first one to specific items on the agenda and the last one was anything.
That's okay.
Then in the first one, we could prevent them from reading the dictionary, unless it was specific to words we were discussing.
As long as they have the time to read the dictionary sometime during the meeting when they want to, then you're good. Because you're not required to have two public comment periods at all of them.
Right.
As long as somebody, whatever they want to say, gets that chance at some point. So I appreciate the practical issue that comes up, and it can be frustrating. And I've been at meetings that have lasted several hours because of lengthy public comment, and that is just the nature of having a public body and having the right for people to come speak to their officials.
So there's no, like, legal way that you would suggest that we could sort of close that loophole? Like, someone could come in here with you know, 200 paid employees and just
As long as they have the people, the only thing to say is they can't give their time to someone else. So you can't have 10 people say, we give our time to so-and-so, so so-and-so can speak for an hour. But if you have 200 people and they each want five minutes, you are going to have a very long meeting. You may have to recess it and come back the next day.
You may remember what happened during the wormies meeting.
I do.
Which was highly contested, and I basically asked people to line up at the center aisle and like, take a number, and then you can come up and speak, and we cut it to three minutes.
We did. It worked well.
How good.
Yeah.
And the comments had to be directed to me as the chair, not to the audience or somebody else. Had to come to me.
Correct.
And we kept it under control in the, in that process.
Yep.
I lost my train of thought.
Anybody else?
I have one, but it's gone.
So I think there was a motion with support with one amendment.
Who made the motion? Member Ringo? Okay.
There was support, I thought. What was the motion? The motion was to approve Article Five with the addition of a single, with the addition of the word single
on public comment.
On public comment, under subpar E.
I'll support it.
Of 5.2.
Okay, motion by Member Ringo and supported by Member Nordike. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion passes six zero. Moving on.
I'd make a motion that we accept Article Six as is. I would make a motion that we approve Article Six as is.
Support. Okay, it's a short and easy one. Uh, motion by Member Nordike, supported by Member Engel to approve Article Six. Review and amendment bylaws. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition. Motion passes six zero. Okay, there we go.
Good work.
Would you prefer, Laura, at this point, a motion to approve Articles One through Six?
It would make me happy.
Does that need to be by resolution or by roll call?
It doesn't have to be.
I would make a motion that the planning commission approve Articles One through Six with the one proposed change of the draft bylaws, of the draft bylaws as included in our board package.
Motion by Member Engel, supported by Member Nordike to approve the bylaws with the one exception. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Laura, nice job.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, what's next?
Uh, next would be a public comment, I believe. Visitors wishing to speak. It'd be Article-
Article eleven. Any visitors who would like to speak? Maddie? Anybody there? Nobody in the audience?
That brings you to Article Twelve, Planning Commission Training.
Planning Commission Training Schedule for 2024.
Okay, so you have a paper copy in front of you. Sorry that I didn't get this out. I'm going to try to not make this a habit, but it wasn't anything substantial to the public. I just wanted to have us an opportunity, an opportunity to talk about future training. So we do have within the approved township board budget um, funds for dues, for membership dues and for training. So the first thing that I am going to be bringing to the township board for approval is to get all of you memberships, a group membership for the Michigan Association of Planning.
Thank you.
Um, so you'll get a nice little welcome packet after we get you all set up. And then you'll get, I don't remember if it's quarterly or monthly newsletters that will have fun uh, issues that are coming up within the planning world. Additionally, we'll get discounts off of training options. So I have put a list of some, we did a little bit of research. I want to thank Maddie for doing a good job looking at some of the websites of our, of our partner organizations or training organizations within the state. And we have some opportunity for Michigan Township Association or Michigan Association of Planning Work Sessions. If you're interested in those, let's, uh, send me an email or send the chair an email and we'll make sure that you get signed up in a timely matter. Additionally, I am going to be applying for a grant for some training so we can have an onsite workshop for the planning commissioners and the zoning board of appeals. We'll have a representative from the Michigan Association of Planning actually coming here. So within that memo, there's some dates that I'd like you to look at. We're trying to nail down this space while it's still open. So if you can possibly by the next, you know, by the time we're together for planning commission again, look through that, figure out if you're available for those dates and we'll get in touch with the Michigan Association of Planning, get that approved, start working on the grants and make sure that all of the funding is properly approved through the township.
Point of order.
Yes, Member Nordike.
Uh, Monday, May 27th, I believe is a holiday.
Like Memorial Day?
I, I think that's what it's called.
We'll take that one off of there right now then.
No wonder the room was available.
Shall we send you directly those dates that we would be available?
Sure.
And then you can see if there's commonality somewhere in there.
And if these dates don't work for that, that onsite training, typically with, with organizations, you have training in the fall and in the spring and they, during the summer, they don't schedule a lot. But for an onsite training, if it worked for everyone, we could do it further out. So if we can't find anything that works, we'll go back to the drawing board. We can go into June. Probably don't want to go too much into July and August, but there's other options. Let's just see if we can make something work. And if, you know, you can't make any of these dates work, but you're really interested in some of the online training, um, that is an option as well. But then we will, the onsite training will really, you know, nail down some of the stuff that we're working on, zoning ordinance, um, some of the process procedure stuff that we're talking about and make sure that we are getting off to the first, the right stop with some of these issues so that we're making strong decisions for the community.
Yeah. Uh, may I ask that you be sure to send this to members Bruno and Roland?
Yep. I will send out digital copies of this.
Okay.
And your documents to the planning commissioners, including Commissioner Nordike tomorrow. You will be on it.
It's, it's nice to get these memos and email form before the meeting.
I agree.
When we're at the meeting, at the last minute, there's not a lot of time to-
And we don't, we don't have any action on it. I apologize. You're absolutely right.
I can take it home and study it, but yeah, I'm just saying for future note, if it's emailed, it's, plus I lose stuff.
Oh, me too.
Okay, thank you for taking the initiative on that. Appreciate it. It'd be great if we could do a workshop right here on that. Okay, Article 13, any other business? I'd just like to mention that I just heard that there's going to be a workshop between the Farmland Preservation Subcommittee and the Board on March 13th. Is that the right date?
Fourteenth. Thirteenth, fourteenth.
It's on a Wednesday.
Should be before the board meeting.
Before the board meeting, which is always on Wednesday.
As the chair of that subcommittee, I'm glad to be informed of that. Thank you.
And I just found out about it myself.
It would be like six o'clock or something.
I don't know. I'm the chair and I don't even know what it is.
I, I don't know the timing details. I believe five thirty or six, but I'll send all the details out.
Well, that would be great.
I would prefer the five thirty time. So in case it stretches longer, it gives us a little more time so that the board members can get to their seven o'clock meeting.
If you could include that, you know, include me in that, I would appreciate it.
He's just the chair of the subcommittee. That's all.
I'm just saying, you know, when you're finding out about a meeting for everybody else.
Uh, the other thing is, uh, Andrea passed out a, a two-page document I gave to her the last time I dropped into the office. I took the, uh, uh, options that we're looking at for farmland preservation. We had two of them that we had drawn up. I added a third. And this document simply goes through and describes each of the documents or each of those options with greater clarity. So you're welcome to give me your input and feedback on those. The third option really was, uh, out of the eight acres, only two acres that face the public road uh, would have access to that road. The other six acres would remain farmland and we can do TDR on that. Um, that's pretty much what I saw in Ireland when I was over there. All the houses faced the public road. There are no private roads at all.
This is, this is something we're talking about in the, in the subcommittee, though. I don't think these guys are up to speed on this because they don't have your drawing.
Okay.
So, but yeah.
Um.
But we've got this, so that's good.
Yeah. I will get you drawings, don't let if you want to see them.
Okay.
Yeah, you have one.
The committee members have one, but he's not in the committee, so he wouldn't. This is, I think, more of a committee thing than a-
Yeah.
Planning commission thing.
Commission thing.
Right.
Okay.
To subcommittee item more so.
And Member Nord Hook will get one in advance of the meeting. We have to make sure the packages go out in advance of the meeting so that they have time to absorb all that stuff and then ask questions. The meeting really won't be a presentation so much as Q and A, as I understand.
Right. There was a, there was another document that was submitted previously and it might've been before Andrea came on board to, I believe Madison and Jade that I, uh, I believe sent on that was going to be given to the board members prior to that meeting to kind of give them a three-minute head start on, on where we're at. Cause I didn't think it was appropriate to regurgitate, you know, months of material to them. But we also didn't want to give them a 18-page document. So we tried to put it in bullet points. Did that get transmitted to them or is that going to get transmitted to somebody so they can, so they-
So I compiled those packet items with Jade.
Okay.
And have the summary as well as-
I just don't, I don't want the board members to come in blind because then the meeting is not going to be near as productive and it, and it's not fair to them either. So.
Yep. Yep, we've got that something.
We got that covered.
Okay, and the sooner you can get that out, the better because I'll give more time, the board members more time to absorb all this stuff.
So let's, that meeting will be on the 13th at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
Township Hall. So let's touch base. Um, Commissioner Rissy tomorrow, um, with Chairman Moxley and get all of those documents compiled. Find, you know, make sure that we have, you know, Chairman Moxley has done, Moxley has done a good job putting a summary together. We have all those charts. I just don't have them in digital form. So we're going to scan it tomorrow. Let's touch base and make sure that everything is spinned up.
Great.
And get that out to the board members.
I'll, I'll stop in.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Nord Hook, question, you going to do it at the township hall at six o'clock? So we have to drive back over here?
Currently it is scheduled at the township hall. I'll get that clarified and send an invite out to everyone.
Just make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We gotta leave 15 minutes early before the township board meeting.
Okay, so we'll make sure that that's clarified.
Yeah, it'd be better if it was either here or we started earlier, one or the other.
It's at Wisner. I have insight.
It's here. Okay.
It just came to me.
Can you set up tables, you know, kind of in an oval pattern or around?
Set it up for work session.
Yeah, for a work session. I appreciate it. Okay, any other business, Member Nordike?
I, I actually, it's at six o'clock here. Um, oh, you know what? I'm looking at the wrong month. I, I apologize.
Okay, Member Nordike?
Yes, I wanted to wait until the end of the meeting. I would like this in the record. Um, eight years ago, a little over February 1st, uh, this commission approved a PUD for RJ Ventures. Okay, um, and that was after the board had sent it back because staff did not provide the proper detail. And the engineer who was responsible for Sentinel Point questioned how that was set up. Um, that development was approved. That developer renamed it Round Hill and it became an absolute nuisance for this township, uh, causing much litigation. And, uh, I think predominantly because of a lack of organization, a lack of detail, Chairman Moxley. And I feel that the systems, uh, didn't exist. And there was a complete lack of follow-through by staff, Chairman Moxley, that really led us to a, a bad situation. And I think a subcommittee led by you and Member Rissy spent a lot of time diligently uh, putting together recommendations, Chairman Moxley.
Two subcommittees.
And I think those were presented to our board and accepted by our board. Um, the staff that is no longer here chose not to do anything with that, Chairman Moxley. Legal drafted memorandums to be included in the handbook and staff did nothing, Chairman Moxley. Um, details matter, Chairman Moxley. Uh, checking work matters, Chairman Moxley. I am seeing things with our current staff as it sits today that concern me. And I hope it's just that we have a new staff. Um, I'll give you some examples. We covered a master plan today, yet we had no copies of the master plan distributed to the members of this committee. And I get that we don't have internet, but we certainly own printers. Okay, uh, I have, for the last two meetings, not received the packet in advance. Uh, we have on Article Seven, Chairman Moxley, uh, we didn't have the proper language from legal like we have typically received in previous meetings. Um, we received a memo that was not included to the public. And further, the work wasn't checked to see that perhaps one of those dates was a holiday. So I'm not trying to nitpick, Chairman Moxley, but details matter and it has cost this township substantially. And I feel like if we go down that path again, we're going to be in a bad place. And I would kindly ask staff to really pay attention to details and double check your work. I will be sticking to details and I will be checking it. And I say that and I provide the context so you know, this is not out of animus. It is because it has cost this township a lot. And we have to be forward-thinking and we have to be ready to check those details. So Chairman Moxley, I, uh, with that, I'll, I'll leave it, but I wanted to state that because I think that we are slowly devolving to where we were. And if we don't pay attention to it, we'll get back to where we were when Peterson was here. That's all I have.
Just to give you an update, I did meet with, uh, our supervisor, Grace Lesprance, and went through the document that we provided, that we developed on process recommendations and spoke about the importance of these things, that these items not get dropped along the way. I think the staff turnover we've had has been part of that and hopefully, uh, we'll start getting back up to speed. But, uh, if anybody else wants to see a copy of that, I'd be happy to pass it out. We spent quite a bit of time going over that, not only the Round Hill project, but then we did make a presentation to the full board, uh, both Alan Roland and myself uh, about the process recommendations. There were nine recommendations and those were, those were important, Member Rissy.
There was a time when in one of those subcommittees, and I don't remember which one, but I think possibly you, myself, I think Timmy might've been there, Manager Swayze was there. We went through the procedures manual and policy manual for the township, which was binder about this thick. And a lot of the stuff that seems to get missed was in that manual. I mean, a lot of detail is, and if, if you haven't had a copy of that yet, Andrea, I would recommend that you, you get it and occasionally flip through it. I'm not saying read it cover to cover because that would be torture. But, uh, but it certainly, uh, certainly is a helpful tool on process for certain things.
I have a copy.
Yes.
Great.
Fine, yeah.
Do you have a copy of the process recommendations?
The binder presentation.
Okay, great, great.
I'm talking about the actual township manual, not the recommend, not necessarily the- Yeah, the procedures manual. Okay. Alright.
Yeah. That Round Hill project was a disaster and it was right across the street from the township hall. And nobody did anything about it. It was a mess. The erosion was, I mean, it was just all going downhill towards Mark Rhodey's property and he ended up suing the township for what happened. And I don't blame him. And, um, you know, it never should have happened. They had to go in and put in what was originally planned, uh, a big retaining wall to stop all this erosion. So it was, it was a mess. And that's why we got a process recommendations committee put together in the first place.
I'd make a motion to adjourn unless somebody else-
Comments in advance of adjournment? Okay. I just want to let you know what's going on for, for the next planning commission agenda since we, we tabled, um, the master plan. Do you want that on the agenda to review at all?
I don't think we tabled the master plan. I think we tabled the watermark for the 1601 Galbraith.
There we go.
Article seven.
That will be on the agenda. You also have a, um, industrial addition to a property in, what was it, PU 33 on corporate exchange. So we'll get out information, you know, in a couple of days because we have a planning commission next week. So obviously I would advise that the planning commissioners drive by there. We do have a lot of what you're referring to with this detail that we, you know, in trying to do a review for a property, I'm reading the ordinance and I'm looking at previous approvals and I'm trying to ensure that everything that's required in the ordinance is required of our developers. And we're getting a lot of that pushback. Well, why, you know, this property hasn't done it, this property hasn't done it. We see that. We see that from an administrative side. We hear you. That's going to be, you know, top priority for the process and procedures. We've already, you know, you guys were very vocal- you know, you guys were very vocal about some of what you'd like, even in your first meeting on the fifth, and we've already started implementing some of those. In addition, I sent out an email um, for an action item on the eighteenth for us just to kind of have a listening session to do exactly what you just did. So please go back in your emails and make sure that you saw those questions that I had asked because a lot of what you just said is, is pertinent to those questions. So if you haven't responded to the questions that I sent out last week, or if you don't have a copy of it, please reach out. Does everybody have that email, just the introduction? Email? That I sent, and my, some of you have. I guess I don't need an answer right now, but if you haven't answered in writing, I think that would be helpful for these conversations of what staff can do to improve processes and to hear you. So that will be on you.
Out of curiosity, of, of all the planning commissioners, how many have you received? Like, I know you received mine. I've heard a few here.
Two or three.
I don't think I responded yet.
Yeah, it's, and honestly, I've been looking at the email and sticking them somewhere.
Can you send a note to those who have not responded? I think those questions were very helpful and I think they'll be helpful to you, so let's push on those members.
Sure.
Was, was that the one where there was some back and forth about how many answers you wanted? I think it was three for each question or something?
And I want to be able to actually hear too. So I asked three questions. If you can respond with three bullet points, then we'll be able to see some of those consistencies and we can talk about it further.
Okay.
But then, you know, we can process it and we can learn together.
Sure.
Yeah.
So that will be on the agenda for the eighteenth and I think that we can continue that conversation because I need to hear um, what's been going on and this is a lot. I'm seeing it when we're doing reviews, so I hear you. Let's get it done together and that's all I have.
Okay. Next meeting will be next Monday. That's the fifth, I believe.
The fourth.
Fourth, okay, next Monday, the fourth. Okay, I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. By Member Engel, supported by Member Rissy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.